This conference will now be recorded.
There we go. All right. It is 7:00 PM. It is Monday, April 4th, 2022. This is a regular meeting for the City Council of Woodland, Washington. If I can please get everyone to silence your cell phones and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll.
Here.
Here.
Present.
All right.
And we'll never work.
I was trying to count in my head how many we had. Rollin'. She also called in this evening.
Yeah. Can I make a motion to excuse Rowan and Councilmember Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, second by Councilmember Rounds. Both have called in this evening. Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Round?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Both councilmembers have been excused. We do have a quorum with four. Mr. Belial? Items not on the agenda. Okay.
Planner stays approaches rapidly to make things happen every day. I don't know if you have the chance to see the video. You know, Tony, because put together, it doesn't move your heart. Really, she deserves like.
She's good.
Citation or something.
I saw the one she did recently with the former Queens or Planner Days. Okay.
So.
Okay. You have that posted somewhere?
It's, um, she's posted it through the historical.
Okay. Perfect.
I'll make sure it gets paid, uh, shared to the Facebook.
Perfect.
Uh, we all know that Raffle tickets for sale already.
I did, just real quick, I just, for the record, I did get number one. Just saying.
You are number one or you got number one?
I got number one. Mr. Belial.
Talking to entertainment acts now and working on getting some details of the fever running going. And you have?
No, it sounds like things are coming right along though.
Yeah.
Good. Excited for 100. All right. Thank you, Mr. Belial. Anyone else for items not on the agenda? We have nobody online this evening. Items on the agenda? Have nobody, and there's still no one online. Hot topics on the agenda this evening. Moving on to the agenda itself. Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to reports of city council.
Well, I would just like to say how nice the community center looks.
Oh, I know.
It's just wonderful.
Absolutely.
So I want to give the crew for the city credit for getting that done. It looks great.
Awesome. Wait, I'm looking forward for it to be painted.
Yes.
Weather dependent, yes, but it already looks amazing. Absolutely.
It does.
Yeah.
I, I did go up to the mosquito district.
Oh.
And visited them.
Okay.
And I found out what they do with Woodland, and it seemed like we were doing pretty good on keeping mosquitoes away from Woodlands, except for the bottom, the oxygen point really bad. And if you see any place where they've got tires laying around, try to get rid of them.
All right.
Put it with water and then try not to be mosquitoes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Burke. Was there a meeting or you just went?
No, I just went up.
You just went for a visit. Good. Remind them that we're here. Good. All right. Public safety.
We had a meeting this evening. At 5:31, Councilmember Chapman, myself and Chief Kelly. And it's kind of short, but the police department's update is Chief Kelly informed the committee that Officer Warner is doing well at the academy and was elected as class president, which is very good.
I did not.
The department's newest officer, Hollingsworth, has successfully completed the first phase of the field training program with Sergeant Keller and has moved on to the second phase with Sergeant Gibbs. There are three candidates in the background process. The candidates should be in for further interviews in the next week or two. Chief Kelly discussed the MOU from the WPOA regarding Sergeant Gibbs' progression within the defensive tactics program. Meeting adjourned at 6:01, and next meeting will be May 2nd at 5:30 PM.
All right, questions? Yes, sir.
I got one thing to add to that. In that meeting, we'd like the council to approve that it has the, our committing approval for do pass recommendation on this, please.
On the MOU?
Yes, on the MOU.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Public Works.
Okay, I'll be making a report for Public Works. We have a meeting today, um, 5:30. On the water, um, we are on hold for the stainless steel and grain delivery. Anticipated completion will be May 31st. On the, uh, I'll get through some of the fall work. And then seven, the half million gallon reservoir is going to be decommissioned at the end of '23 this year. And we're getting a geotechnics report being done currently for a 1.5 million gallon reservoir to replace it. And let's see. The West Scott Avenue is going to be closed. I mean, we'll open around 11, which we already mentioned today. And then we'll be shutting down the Davidson Avenue to begin after West Scott. Be closing, being closed both east and westbound from April 11th to May 20th. So get ready, you can't, won't be able to go back there in a little bit. Subject construction schedule, we reported up today. It was up yesterday, so it's already being advertised. The city's doing a lot of pressure washing, weed tree, cleaning up throughout the city. You see that coming down now. Notice that today, it's all running around. We have on the, uh, voting on the seal code bid for the police station. It's on the agenda tonight. We recommend that you approve it. Okay, on grants, we're working on this safe route to school grant, the pedestrian and bike program, and the RAGE grant, working on that. We're applying to a lot of them right now. Anything else that you plan?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Burke. Council of Government, we did not have a meeting. That's a biweekly, so I've got nothing for that one. DWR, I don't think we have anything yet. That's coming up. Okay? And so then moving on to my report, I have to say that the pressure washing is looking amazing. We're getting ready for the 100 years Planner Day, so I saw them out there working today over by the restrooms. They refused to look up because they were working so hard. I walked down to get coffee and they were working. I mean, they ran it. They ran it to win it, so good job on that. It's going to look beautiful. I was down in the park with my, I took my dog for a walk from school during soccer practice, and I could not find anything to throw into the lake for the dog to go and grab it. It's that clean. Not a pine cone, nothing. I'm telling you what. I am, I'm amazed at how clean it was down there. Like, not like, oh wow, I can't believe it's, like, it's clean, but it's so clean that I could not even find a pine cone to throw into the lake for my dog to go and get. So thank you to Public Works group for their diligence of keeping, keeping it well picked up, like, extremely picked up. And I love the new signs of don't climb on trees. I did notice those as well. I have one more announcement. Mr. Voice? I have a little something for you.
Oh, can I take you home?
Can I take you home? What? Beautiful, beautiful new little puppy. Currently, uh, this is sarge by the breeder, but whose name is going to be Bolo. This is going to be Officer Bolo, and this is a donation to the Woodland Police Department as a therapy dog. So we will be taking possession of Officer Bolo at the end of the month, and that will be turned over to someone into the police department as a therapy animal, which will be part of the newly created Woodland Police Department ceremonial unit. So this animal will be used to, at community events, to bridge that gap between the community and the police department, but then also to help those that are. Absolutely. Faced with trauma. So he is approximately six weeks old right now, I think, and we'll be bringing him home at the end of April. So, and by bringing him home, we don't know quite yet where he'll be going, but we have an application process underway, and little Bolo will be joining the ranks of the police department shortly. So I hope that when the contract comes forward, you'll say yes, because I already did. Absolutely. Police badge and all. So I'm working with the chief and the employees at the police department to figure out who is going to be the representation to take care of this young, this young man here. So more to come on that. So hopefully on the 18th, when the contract comes forward, we'll know exactly who he'll be going home with. All right. Mr. Voice? It's, it's hard to follow. It's a boy.
Just a couple things I wanted to add on the council agency. So I emailed out questions to everyone. Councilmember Burke had some response. Three additional questions and place a question. So I'll email those out to council, and again, if you have any additions or additions or changes, email me directly, not everyone, so you don't have another meeting. So, uh, we'll receive applications, we'll receive a couple of questions. We indicate that we share the questions prior to the interviews with the applicants. So I'll also email them directly so we got those. And so if I don't hear from anybody by Wednesday afternoon, I'll consider the questions complete, and we'll include them in the faculty. The process, just so everyone understands what we want to amend it. So the applicants will be in the lobby on the 11th, in the sixth place, at 7:00 PM. It does talk about drawing names to see the order, but please interview one. So I'll have some names and a hash. Maybe the mayor can pull out or one of the council members. And each applicant has a couple minutes to introduce themselves, go through the questions. I'm anticipating they'll want to each ask an individual question and go around the corner. And then at the end, they'll have a couple minutes to just sum up anything that anybody says on the panel. We'll be asking folks to stay in the lobby until it's their turn. Then we'll go to executive session. We can discuss the qualifications of the applicants. There will be a special meeting, so we will be able to take action. We'll have an action set up to take nominations and into votes on those nominations. And the successful applicant, if there is one, will get received in the next regular.
Will you have the printed questions for, for, okay? Maybe.
Long as we pick and approve some.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe. Ain't no guarantee, yeah.
So, um, the only questions that can be asked are on that list?
Right.
Is that how the, is that how I'm understanding?
Yes. You'll say that you have to ask the exact same questions.
Gotcha. Because I remember the last time this came up, no one was, like, on here. It says, the public is allowed to see it, but we were not. Everybody was told to stay in the lobby and all of that.
I think.
It's a public meeting, so technically we're requesting that the other applicant stay in the lobby. But, you know, it's one of those free areas where.
No, but this was like, it was, we did it before the actual council meeting started.
We did, yeah.
And no one was allowed in until after that whole process happened, and then that was pre cameras, I think.
It was.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So, so is part of the public meeting, and unless council has any objections, we allow anyone in the council chambers and the type of video room. During the executive session, you know, the public, what we are allowed to do, and then we come back and the public meeting to take nominations and offensive.
Gotcha.
If you are public, you, um, I'm not supposed to help. That is all I wanted to clarify right now, so if I don't, if the council, if I Wednesday afternoon, questions will be finalized, and then we'll get them in the faculty. You can talk about some, you know. There is a funny question, uh, coming up on 17th, 7:00 AM Eastern. So. Funny question. So here's. So how much we pay for my work is not a question I ask. Let's start throwing out there. One other issue. Oh, uh, all cars and all train vehicles.
Questions for Mr. Voice? I did forget to mention, I did send an email off to the business chamber this week. I don't know if anyone saw that. I'm looking to start a new program, which Mr. Goddard is extremely excited about, which is the traffic impact fee credit program for industrial and commercial properties. So you will be seeing something coming across to your desk for code change in hopes that that will spike some commercial and industrial projects, and that's going to be a two-year program where they can apply for transportation impact fee credit. They'll stop by fire impact fees and frontage improvements, but sometimes those impact fees for transportation can be in the hundreds of thousands. So we're hoping that some folks will take advantage of that in our commercial or industrial zone. So at some point, there will be a code change coming forward. Is that correct, Mr. Goddard? Yeah, for, for council to consider, and I've already notified the business chamber to blast it up to their members, which they already have. So hopefully people are talking, but I haven't received any comments as of yet on whether or not they're, they're supportive of it, of the program or not.
There's an after hours for chamber Thursday.
After hours for chamber on Thursday at 5:00 PM at the golf course. Mr. Goddard? Oh, I did. Oh, he did. He did. I had a chance to call him. He, he said he was on vacation, so I didn't want to bother him, but. All right. I like that. Thank you. Mr. Randolph? Mrs. Anderson? Chief Kelly?
Mr. Brown did a great job reporting for the department.
Do you have anything else to add?
No.
Thank you. Travis, Mr. Goddard? And Ms. Coleman? All right. Thank you. Moving on to consent items this evening.
Make a motion to set items.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, second by Councilmember Rounds. Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
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 Consent items have passed. Moving on to action item L, authorized mayor to sign page freezer contracts.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Holland, second by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Holland?
Um, this came before the finance committee at our last meeting, and this is the program that digitally stores all the text messages and things like that for public records requests. So we had a do pass recommendation.
Mrs. Rounds?
I agree with them. Councilperson.
Further discussion? Mrs. Anderson?
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Round?
Aye.
Action item L has passed. Moving on to action item M, approved change order for Eco Fencing and Decking LLC for the community building, siding, and roofing project.
Make a motion to approve, uh, charge order for EOC, EC, oh, fencing and decking LLC for the community building, siding, and roofing project.
Moved by Councilmember Rounds, second by Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Rounds?
Well, it's, it's a much needed improvement, and I think it looks great, and so I should, I say go for it.
Councilmember Burke?
I agree.
Further discussion? Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item M.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Action item M has passed. Moving on to action item N, authorize the mayor to sign agreement with Pup Creek Construction for the water treatment plant stump and debris removal project.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Burke? Councilmember Chapman?
Right, this is maintenance, got to be performed, so I'll go get it done, get it over with.
Further discussion? Mrs. Anderson, you please take the roll on action item N.
Aye.
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 Action item N has passed. Moving on to action item O, authorize mayor to sign agreement with all seal for the police station parking lot seal coating project.
Move to approve the final packet for police station parking lot seal coating.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, second by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes, this is stuff that I'm going to keep, keep on top of it, so we don't have any future problems with the parking lot.
Councilmember Rounds?
I agree.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item O.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving on to action item P, ordinance number 1508 code amendments establishing an agricultural zoning designation. First reading.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Burke?
We better get that done.
Councilmember Chapman?
I agree.
Further discussion? Mrs. Holland?
Is this, so is this in response to the previous situation when annexation was discussed? Is that what this is for?
One of the main issues was the protection of agriculture and pressure on agricultural land in the bottom if it was included in our first act of the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, and if council will permit? Does this help with growth within the city as well as we expand or move out into the bottoms area? How does this impact or help?
I believe it reduces one of the barriers to resistance to master planning on because it is an extra tool that would protect property owners who are concerned about bringing up true development.
Thank you, Mr. Goddard. Further discussion? Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item P.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it. The time is now 7:26. We are moving into a workshop regarding the strategic plan that came out of the council retreat. You have a copy of that strategic plan in front of you. Thank you, Mr. Voice and the team for making it very pretty, even though it is black and white at this time.
It is all very pretty.
Oh, how did he get a colored one? Oh, you printed it. Oh, okay. He did that at home on his own dime. So the, I, I think that this is what was discussed during the retreat and bringing it back forward, and I think it's a great, this has been passed around through the executive team. The only addition that I would like to see and council to discuss would be under the economic development tab in the long-term actions. I think that we need to be involved, or a statement needs to be made, that we be involved with the county planning department, with the outcome being a decision maker for future decisions, at least having a voice in that. That is the only addition that I think that I would make to this, and that was just brought forward this morning. So that has not been printed yet, but that's the only thing that I would suggest to enhance this document.
Do we mean?
Short term or the overall?
Long term, long term would be being engaged with the county planning department with the outcome being a decision maker.
So is that going to be a committee or, or someone to join it?
No, I think Travis, we're already doing that. We're already doing that. This just kind of puts it into a document that says, hey, no, we are actively doing that, and this is what we're going to get for it. I think Mr. Goddard is doing a great job with engaging the planning department at the county level.
Both counties or just Calhouns?
Mr. Goddard?
That is intended, I interpreted that to public county, which the word we did last year incorporated our concern into the public county, countywide policy, but I feel we have what we need in their documentation.
It's weird that they are so much easier.
Right.
It's been my, I mean, just my experience outside of here, it's been my experience that they are so much more receptive to doing things in Woodland and being supportive than the county that the bulk of us sit in.
Part of this relationship and history I have with them, part of it is they hold large number of staff, plus I hate to GMA form, but having GMA counting their obligated to deal with those situations.
It's too, it's too different than GMA.
When I send them a letter, they have them close up to the press.
With Mr. Goddard bringing GMA up, I know that we're talking about strategic plan, but this development or possible developments in the future, um, I'm thankful at times that we are GMA because we are able to have those discussions with these large developments that want to create projects that would impact our city, and we're able to use GMA to our advantage, where if we were not, we would not be able to. What do you guys think about this document? Yes?
I should also point out, we need a couple of changes, and that's why I printed out property smoothly. Public Board Director, who had emailed me, and I'm going to get it into the faculty, but I missed her email. If you look at the infrastructure column, the second bullet was changed under short-term actions. Instead of monitor road condition sidewalks for planning purposes, changed to review existing road and sidewalk conditions. Under long-term actions, bullet two and three were updated. And I believe that was it. I just wanted to point that out, that it was different from what you saw. And I believe that was it, I just wanted to point that out, that it was different from what you saw for that. Be true.
I'm okay with it.
Thoughts? Mrs. Rounds says she's good with it. I think this is everything that we discussed and kind of plays into the other conversations that we had as well. I believe, yes.
Yeah, we'd ask at a future meeting for council to endorse it.
Can someone tell me what vibrant downtown means? I just.
Something is an aspirational term.
Well done, Mr. Boyce.
Everyone's got their own definition of what vibrant downtown is, so, but I think the common understanding would be, you know, hats and tail, rest of that situation. More people in the downtown.
Gotcha.
There's been a lot of discussion about, to shift our focus from downtown to the east side as well, and I think we have to be careful of that, but we are looking at the east side as well when we're talking about our tourism promotion area, will be encompassing the entire commercial zone when we do that. So, I don't want folks on the east side to think that we've forgotten about them or that they don't exist, because they do, it's just that the downtown. Yeah, right. Downtown needs more love, I think, than, than the, than the east side, but we have not forgotten about them and will be included in the future discussions.
I'm glad to see that the city is expanding downtown and staying downtown, so that kind of helps keep people coming downtown. So hopefully, we'll get a restaurant coming someday.
Well, when I was on my walk today, I did see another store had opened up, and I, I know that there was one across from City Hall called Copper. Something, but I didn't see that they were open, but I saw the sign was out of the window, so I'm not sure if they're getting ready or if they've abandoned the plant. Okay.
The candy store, has anybody been to that?
Candy stores, okay.
A candy store in, used to be, was across from the karaoke place, that little plaza there. There's a candy store, they're open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday as of right now.
Look at Tracy's all excited, she's like, there's a candy store.
There is.
Over by the new chiropractor.
Over by the chiropractor.
Yeah, samples, samples.
She goes over there every afternoon.
Park Plaza, candy, all right. So make sure you swing in there, yeah, so it's, it's working.
She's already been warned that she better stock up big for planters day weekend.
Oh, yeah.
There'll be.
Absolutely.
So many people.
Because kids aren't gonna get enough candy thrown out.
I know.
Are we throwing candy, Mr. Belia? Are we still able to toss the candy?
Some rule regarding that, I'm not an expert on those rules.
Okay.
But it seemed like they were talking about various.
Still allowed. Okay, so like little tiny rules, okay.
Yeah.
Just so the guidance.
Gotcha. Yeah, good, okay. I know, I think we're one of the last ones in the whole area to be able to do that. It's because we, because we're thoughtful and responsible. Yes. Any questions or changes to this document, or you think that we're good to move forward to bring this back for adoption?
We're all the department heads good with it.
Department heads, yes, we did shop this around and make sure that they had a chance to review it, and they were on board before we brought it back forward to you.
Yeah, I like it, I like, this is so much cleaner.
Easy, right?
Yeah.
Well, and I think the great thing about this too is we'd be able to say, oh, hey, we did that, which got us that, and now we need to reevaluate and be able to have something that's measurable here. I think we'll be able to measure it, yeah, easier.
As far as like the, I mean, these are just like things. I went through the, the comprehensive plan project, I sat in the back of the room. I still have mine, I found it a couple weeks ago, it's like this big, I have the hard copy. And I, I think Mr. Goddard is gonna have a good time revamping that. Comprehensive plan.
Yes, I guess the question is though, are we gonna have to hire out for that, or will we be able to do that in-house? Sounds good.
As long as it doesn't cost money.
He's not committed, he's not committing himself at this, at this point.
If somebody wants to volunteer, it's good for them, but so much of that sounded like we were, the last couple ones sounded like we're trying to sell real estate here, that's what it reads to me, is like we're trying to sell real estate to people, to, to get people here, and I, and I think, I mean, that might be what a comprehensive plan is, but I think we have an obligation to the people who currently live here to tell them what, what we're doing, what we've done, where we plan to keep spending their money. I mean, that's kind of how I look at what a comprehensive plan should be, is so that the people who already live here know what's going on, rather than, here's our sales pitch on why you should move to Woodland, because a lot of it was not, the, the, my, my biggest bone to pick, I think, is the demographic of, of people salaries. Because if you read it, everybody is making seven, in, in that one, if I remember correctly, it was way over 75,000 a year, but if that's the case, then why is half the school district? Every, over half the kids in the school district receives free lunches, pre-coop. So I mean, to me, that, there's a disconnect between who are we, who are we surveying and who actually lives here, so, that was, that's just one of those things, when you get to it, that'll be kind of exciting to see what.
The update on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Plays into our economic development. All right. Is there anything else on the strategic plan? All right, seeing none, the time is now 7:37, we are out of executive session.
Workshop, we're out of workshop.
Oh, workshop, what'd I say?
Executive session.
Whoa! I, Mr. Randolph just had a coronary. And we had people in the room, and we didn't advertise or anything, let me rephrase. And now is, the time is now 7:38, we are out of workshop for the city of Woodlands.
And we've got a motion.
And we got a motion on the floor to adjourn by Mr. Chapman and seconded by Councilmember Rounds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The time is now 7:38, sorry, Mr. Randolph. I apologize.